First 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. On the agenda first is a request for an executive session. Does somebody want to read the motion there at the top? Mike usually does it, but...
I have it, I can read it. Um, where is it on the agenda?
Uh, number one.
Yeah, executive session per...
You have to enter into.
Okay, we're gonna enter into executive session per GLC 30A, section 21. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the police and fire unions in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board and the chair, so declares.
So declared. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, you're muted.
I'm sorry, yes.
Hey, Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
Okay, hold on.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Okay, we're all set.
Hey, Jeff, you wanna read the disclosure? You read it so much quicker than me.
All right, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at HTTPS colon backslash backslash www.sturbridge.gov backslash town hyphen administrator backslash pages backslash how hyphen access hyphen virtual hyphen meeting. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen in or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455, enter 1428 pound for the meeting number, and 12345 for the access code. This phone number will only be active for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next we have public service announcement. Ian, do you have any?
I do not.
Okay, Mary?
No.
Chase?
I have none, thank you.
Mike?
Me either, I...
Okay, I just wanted to, um, thank the organizers, particularly Russ Chamberlain, for the ride-by birthday party for Bill and Rowley Hewitt yesterday. There was quite a crowd, and, uh, Rowley and his wife were sitting there in the window smiling away. They really appreciate it. So, next on the agenda, we have a moment of silence for those affected by COVID. Okay, thank you. I have three different times here. Jeff, you have 6:35 yet?
I do not, I have 6:32 at best. So perhaps we can do 4A?
You mean 6A?
6A.
What's that, 6A?
I just note...
I'm sorry, 6A, yeah, you know.
This is consideration and possible action on the resignation of Brian McRoy from the Department of Public Works. Any comments? Anyone want to make a motion?
Uh, I, uh, this is Mike, and I'd like to make a motion to accept, uh, Brian McRoy's resignation from the Department of Public Works. Um, and I would like to acknowledge, uh, the, uh, all the contribution that, uh, McCoy family, uh, has, including Brian, has made to the town over the years, right? Brian and his, you know, his, uh, father and, uh, have, uh, you know, contributed greatly to, uh, uh, the, uh, codes that we have and, uh, and the good, uh, service that we've had over the years in snow plowing and so forth. So I would like to, uh, in addition to accepting his resignation, uh, uh, thank, thank him for, and his family for everything they've done, uh, yeah, uh, wish him well in his, uh, his new endeavor.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second, uh, Chase.
Okay, any discussion? I just wanna say, um, Brian's mother also served many years as a, uh, second grade teacher at Burgess.
Yep.
Okay, Mary, how do you vote?
We lost Mary.
I'm having trouble today. Mary, yes.
Okay, Mike?
Mike, yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
Ian?
Ian, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Okay, Mike, do you have the, uh...
Yes, I do.
Notice?
Okay. Uh, Town of Sturbridge Public Hearing Notice. Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Concord Brewery, doing business as Rapschallion, for a general on-premises all-alcoholic beverages license and a common vicular license at the premises located at 3 Arnold Road. Uh, that's behind 484 Main Street in Fitzdale, Mass. 01518. With the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held on Monday, March 12, 2021, at 6:30 PM. This hearing will be held virtually. The Sturbridge Board of Selectmen elect, consistent with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, uh, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, to hold, uh, the public hearing virtually. Details regarding how to virtually access a meeting can be found here at HTTPS forward slash forward slash www.sturbridge.gov forward slash town dash administrator forward slash pages forward slash how dash access dash virtual dash meeting. That's the notice.
Okay, and I see that, uh, Mr. Daniel has joined the discussion.
Good evening.
Good evening. Would you like to just give us a quick synopsis of your intention?
Sure. We are in the process of renovating 3 Arnold Road on the second floor, right above Homefield Brewing, or Homefield Kitchen, and, uh, you know, we've submitted much of the paperwork and, uh, are going through the motions to hopefully open, uh, April or later in the spring. And, uh, you know, we intend to replicate the business model we had up the road, uh, without the, the brewing. Um, we, we intend to open seven days a week, uh, during the week, probably late afternoon to early evening, and on weekends, 12 to early evening, or, or eight or so, 9:00 PM. Um, you know, we intend to operate our food truck, which we were doing, uh, at 195 Arnold Road, and, uh, also have guest, uh, food sources, either our, our neighbors down below us at Homefield, or potentially food trucks, you know, on weekends, to complement our own food truck. Um, our license, I think, is, uh, we did apply for, but understand if, if we don't get the whole thing, but I think we applied for, uh, you know, our, our, our own beer and wine and liquor. And I think that covers most of it, obviously, you know, I'm here for any questions.
Any questions from the board? I have, uh, one question. On your application, you said seating capacity is 75, however, on the floor layout you gave us, it's actually 49 seats.
We, we are anticipating hopefully a patio, uh, seasonal service. Obviously, we know through the motions that, you know, we have to, uh, you know, if that is feasible, based on, you know, the patio space and parking and et cetera. But that was our, uh, our occupants here, that was our, our figure, 75, based on patio as well, seasonal patio space.
Um, that would have to be a separate request at some time if it does come through because that's the expansion of the present premises. So if we do give you a license today, it would have to be just to be 49 seat capacity.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I had a question about the, the application itself. It, it, uh, in the application, it, it really doesn't mention the corporation. It, it, it's signed as a partnership, uh, between you and Peter, but, uh, but then we've got like a hundred pages of, uh, corporate information, uh, after that. Is, are you applying, uh, for the corporation? Or it, because the corporate part in the, uh, application wasn't filled out. It was like, as if it was you and Peter filing as a partnership. Uh, well, that's the way I read the application.
Everything should be through Concord Brewery, doing business as Rapschallion. That tax ID that we had up the hill, uh, 195 Arnold Road, that, all the, you know, the hundred pages and, and, and supporting documents should have been all Concord Brewery.
Yeah, it says Concord Brewery, but it doesn't say Concord Brewery Inc., and then what, the box for partner is, is checked, not corp, uh, corporate officer.
I'm not sure, I don't have that in front of me, I don't know if that was a mistake by, um, our office filled that out, uh, if that was not me. Um, but we filled out, we filled these things out a lot over the last 10 years, so that might have been a, a misstep by someone, but everything should say Concord Brewery, you know, all the supporting documents.
If, if it was just a clerical area, error, I'm sure it can be corrected easily, so...
Okay, sorry about that.
I, I just didn't want it to go to ABC wrong because... Let's come back.
Section, section five...
Yeah?
Section four, under corporate structure, it does say corporation, under section five on the application.
Oh, okay, well... Yeah, I, where was it that I saw, was the box was checked as partner? I don't know. But somewhere on, on the application, and it, oh yeah, on the applicant statement at the bottom, it says owner op, operator is his title.
You have Willie?
Uh, Peter is actually, I guess, the president of the corporation.
Yeah, we're both in, uh, as officers, and he might have signed it as co-owner or co-partner, uh, sometimes I say co-owner, I'm not sure what he said.
Yeah, um, so, it, yeah, the other question I had is, uh, it's a change of use, does it require that, uh, you know, it goes before the planning board, or for, to check, you know, how much parking and that sort of thing at this time, or...
We, uh, we presented, uh, all those documents, and, um, that was approved by the planning board, I think, uh, I wanna say two months ago.
Okay.
It was presented to, you know, a meeting like this, and, uh, and Jean and the board approved it.
Okay, anyone else? Mary?
I don't have a question on, on any of the documents. I just wanna say, um, Mr. Daniel, thank you for staying in Sturbridge. I know you left your other location, and you, your brewery is extremely popular among residents. So there are a lot of residents very pleased to hear that you're still going to keep, uh, a taproom in Sturbridge. So I just wanna thank you for that and wish you success at your new location.
Yeah, thank you, we're, we're excited, as you guys know, and Jeff, and even Nelson, uh, we've been searching for, for many years, because we knew our lease would be up eventually, and, uh, you know, we always wanted to keep a presence in Sturbridge, so we're very fortunate we found down the hill, and obviously Homefield is a close partner of ours, so, uh, thank you, we're, we're looking forward to it, staying in town.
Good, thanks. Okay, anyone else on the board? Okay, it is a public hearing, so is anyone called in?
Good evening, this is the public hearing for the Rapschallion, uh, liquor license. Is there anyone that would like to speak to that? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the Rapschallion public hearing? There's no one to speak to that.
Okay, is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
So, so move, Mike.
Is there a second?
Second, Chase.
Okay, Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
And I vote yes. Okay, someone wanna make a motion then on the request for the common dictula, Ian, all alcohol license?
This is Mike, and I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the all alcohol license. Uh, should we do two separate votes, or, or can I make one motion to, for both?
Uh, you could, you could combine them.
Okay, I, I will make a motion to approve, uh, both the, uh, alcohol, all alcohol license and common victo license as well.
Hey, do you wanna put the times on that, Mike?
Uh, what was the times requested, uh?
Uh, Monday to Friday, 4:00 to 10:00. Saturday, 12:00 to 10:00. Sunday, noon to 8:00.
Yeah, that's so moved.
Okay, is there a, is there a second?
I'll second that, Chase.
Okay, any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Oh, Mike, on that motion though, we, um...
Yeah.
On the all alcohol, you'll have to add the addendum, the, um, seating capacity for...
For 49.
Right, number 49.
Yes.
Okay, Mary, you have a question? Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I, I am looking at their application, and in the description of premises, it does say an outdoor patio.
Oh, I do see that, we have to scratch that. On, um, section three, one floor, three rooms, one outdoor patio.
Yeah.
So we will have to delete that.
For the time being. Okay. I, I will amend my motion to, to, uh, amend, to change section three to, uh, not, to delete the patio area for now, and, uh, have the occupancy at 49.
Okay, who seconded the motion?
I did, Chase, and I amend my second.
Okay, and Mary, you still vote yes?
Yes, Mary, yes.
Ian?
Uh, I'm staying from the vote.
Okay, Mike?
Mike, yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you, and, uh, good luck.
Thank you all, have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a public hearing for a forest harvesting permit for Mike Bartlett, Hall Forest Products Incorporated, for 23 acres off Shattuck Road, owned by James Pioppi. Okay, good evening, Mr. Bartlett.
Yes, good evening.
Want me to read the notice?
Yes, Mike, please.
Town of Sturbridge Public Hearing, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 132, Section 40 through 46, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Sturbridge will hold a public hearing on the petition of Austin Burrows and Mike Bartlett, Michael Bartlett, for a forest harvesting permit for just 22 acres off Shattuck Road, uh, identified as, uh, 128 Route 84, uh, owned by James Pioppi. A public hearing will be held on Monday, March 1st, 2021, at 6:30 PM. The Sturbridge Board of Selectmen elect, consistent with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, to hold the public hearing virtually. Details regarding how to virtually access a meeting can be found here at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash www.sturbridge.gov forward slash town dash administrator forward slash pages forward slash how hyphen access hyphen virtual hyphen meeting.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, Mr. Bartlett, would you like to explain the project, please?
Yes, yes, we would like to do a, uh, what referred to as a seed tree harvest on this property, uh, there are portions of it that are steep that would not be treated. Uh, in reviewing the project with Conservation Commission, they did ask for, uh, an additional buffer, uh, the, what may be a vertical there, and we did, uh, designate that as such, and, we, we intend, we would like to use the same yarding area on the Suijak property that would eliminate having to improve to act a truck into the Pioppi property. Um, so, that's what, uh, that's our proposed, uh, project.
Okay, questions or comments from the board? Chase?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with the permit itself. Could you talk to me more, though, about the hours of operation that you're planning to harvest timber up there?
See, well, we would, uh, you follow the seven to five hours as, uh, as prescribed by the town, I guess I should say, as far as any, uh, the harvest...
Yeah, the, the hours are actually seven to dusk, because dusk varies depending on the time of year, but we do have, we do have those conditions, and we also have the condition of no holidays, no Sundays, and Saturdays only till noon. Seven to noon. Um, this is, um, an issue because of the harvesting that's already going on down there. There have been complaints and complaints about trucks early in the morning.
Right, yes, I was made aware of that, uh, I guess, a little over a week ago. I have talked to the operator, I thought we had everybody on the same page. There was a little miscommunication with one truck going in and out of there a week ago, Sunday. Other than that, there have not been any activities on a Sunday, that was the only one that I'm aware of.
Oh no, you kind of faded out at the end. Jeff?
Yes, I had a conversation with Mr. Bartlett, uh, last week, and again this morning, about the traffic in the morning. I've asked Chief Desert to have a cruiser down there in the morning before 7:00 AM to see if they're working.
I was made aware of that.
If they are, we'll take another step further with this, not this application this evening, but the existing one, and kind of review that for compliance. But, uh, Chief Desert said he'll have someone out there in the mornings for a couple of days to make sure that they're not working too early.
Do you have a second question? Okay, anyone else?
Question for you folks is, one that I have, is, is, uh, a part of, you know, one of the operators driving in with his personal pickup to, you know, fuel machines and such, is that allowed before 7:00 or not?
Well, that sounds like work to me, so I think he should wait till 7:00. I mean, it, you know, it, it goes through a residential neighborhood and...
Yeah, it's, well, yeah, I thought it was a public road, and a personal vehicle is one thing, is a little different than a transporting truck, so to speak.
That's right, but if he's going in to fuel up trucks, that, to me, is part of the work. I don't know how the rest of the board feels on that one. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I... I had a question this morning, they were out here, I can tell you right now, this morning, they came by with the big truck, 6:30 in the morning.
Wait a minute, who's talking?
Uh, we got someone on the public line.
Uh, they, they'll just have to wait though until the board has chance first.
I understand, I turned the volume down. We'll get to them.
Okay.
All right.
Now, we're not shut, we're not shutting them off, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike?
Madam Chair, I, uh, in reading the, uh, the memo from, uh, from the Conservation Commission, uh, Conservation Agent, uh, there is a recommendation that, uh, that, that a independent party monitor the, uh, the operation, uh, other than the harvester. And, uh, you know, given the information that I have before me now, I, I would tend to agree with that recommendation of the Conservation Commission, that the Selectmen, uh, require some level of oversight. recommendation of the Conservation Commission, that the Selectmen, uh, require some level of oversight monitoring of the, uh, Suijak, uh, uh, project, as well as this project, uh, as, you know. I, I would concur with that recommendation.
Well, that certainly is, in my mind, a reasonable recommendation, and I hope the neighbors know that the Conservation Commission usually, or should, have contact information so that if a neighbor has a complaint, they can contact the Conservation Agent, and she can handle it. Mary?
Uh, I agree with, um, Michael, Michael's sentiments that some oversight by a third party is called for under these circumstances.
Okay, anyone else? Yep?
Hi, my name's...
The Conservation, uh, Commission, Mr. Bartlett's providing, Mr. Bartlett created the forest plan. There's a separate logger, so what this memo means is Mr. Bartlett's providing oversight on the existing Suijak project, and I think what Becky's, or Mrs. Gendreau was saying, Mr. Bartlett should provide oversight on the new one, too, so that someone watches the logger. Mr. Bartlett's not the logger. He just created the plan.
Okay, anyone else?
Hi, uh, this is Mike Monopoly. I live on Shattuck Road. I do have...
Ready for the public?
Yes.
Um, well, in one minute. Ian, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Well, the question's, okay, we can get the public now, Jeff.
Okay. We did send out an email today. We received on this application from Mr. Roddy. Uh, you should all have that. Let me turn on the public comment side here. Good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting, public hearing on the Pioppi logging permit. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Hello, Mike?
Yep.
Hey, uh, Jeff, good evening, everyone. Um, Mike Monopoly, I live on forty-five Shattuck Road. Um, this is, obviously, the logging's been going on for the last couple of months now. Um, in addition to some of the complaints, I, I am up at five a.m., and I was seeing the drivers out at five-fifteen, uh, you know, in the last couple of months. Um, just this weekend, I happened to notice they decided to actually follow the rules. Um, so, that was very convenient of them. Uh, just a few other things. I mean, to be honest, this property is owned by somebody that does not live in town. It is landlocked, and therefore, there's probably some other motive going on here. Um, I've lived in Sturbridge my life, and I know property owned by builders and what ends up happening. Um, there is, knowing some of the history of the town, Route fifteen does have access. It would just need to be made and probably worked out with other landowners. I think that those, Route fifteen is probably better suited to handle the heavy equipment that's been going down. Uh, some of the machinery that's going down, I mean, quite honestly, we have a tractor-trailer problem on this road, and everyone on this road knows it. Uh, when we get a tractor-trailer on our road, it blocks up the street. Sometimes it takes down wires. Uh, we need to, this is, this road is not designed to handle this, and to be honest, I think we need to look at other solutions, uh, if they want to harvest lumber from the woods there. I have a nine-year-old son, uh, and to be honest, I, I don't want anything happening to him if one of these truck drivers decides to go thirty-five, forty miles an hour on this road. Road isn't designed for it, can't handle it, and it just needs to stop.
Good.
Hey, Mr. Bartlett, do you have any comment on that?
There is no access to Route fifteen from those properties. The Pioppi property ends at the exit ramp or the, the exit that goes to the truck stop and so forth, and on to Route fifteen, but there is no frontage or any way physically, well, I shouldn't say that, without significant amount of construction to, there's, there's no access for this property to, to Route fifteen.
This is Mike Monopoly. Again, I just would counter that with, there just happens to be conveniently accessed as of the road that was made. Had that not existed, you would not have been able to access that property. So therefore, I think we need to consider other ways to get to the property, because I don't think it's acceptable to have this machinery on our road.
Can other public make comments now, too?
Hold on one second. Madam Chair, are you looking for other comments?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Uh, is there someone else that would like to speak to the public hearing?
Yes. Chris Brennan, fifty-two, Shattuck Road. From my understanding, that road that they're using, that comes off of Shattuck Road, provided access to eighty-four many years ago and to Route fifteen. We know this because that's why tractor-trailers come down our road currently, and they tell us that all of the old maps show that access road to Route fifteen and to Route eighty-four. So, that does exist. Before this project, there was really no access through the property. They had to make that road. Um, I also am very concerned, I'm, I'm still speaking, if I can finish, please. The other issue that Mr. Monopoly mentioned that I will, um, also talk about is the appropriateness of tractor-trailers coming down our road. In the wintertime, our road becomes one lane. We also have a lot of, um, people on the road when we're out there walking, or our dogs, or when our children are out on the road. It's very hard to manipulate this winding, narrow road. It becomes one lane, and what happens is, uh, residents have to end up backing up the road to get into their driveway so that these trucks can go by. Another problem with these trucks going down the road is, and this began sometime in October or November, they go very, very, very fast. I sit here at my computer, because I'm a teacher in a district nearby, and my students even mention the noise that can come through my house to the computer of the, to the, the, to my classroom as I'm teaching, so I know that this is incredibly disruptive, okay? And I'm also very, want to know how long is this going to go on? And also, um, it's really important that we understand what is the end result? What is this property being cleared for? Is it just forest cultivation, or does the owner have other plans in mind? I would respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen hold off on approving the permit until many of these other issues can be resolved. Thank you.
Um, Chris, as far as what's going to be done, it's forest harvesting. What may occur years from now is not in the purview of the Selectmen. As a matter of fact, it's not even in the purview of the Selectmen to deny a harvest permit once the state has approved it. All we can do is place reasonable conditions on it.
Thank you.
And I think, yeah, and I think with complaints we've been hearing that you people on Shattuck Road will certainly be well aware and know where to go if any problem continue to arise with the other permit, but continue to arise with the new permit. Hey, Mary?
Thank you very much for clarifying that. I am mostly concerned, though, about the fact that the road is so narrow. It's really not an appropriate road for these enormous trucks to go down. It's creating a lot of, um, dangerous situations.
It is enormous trucks to go down. It's creating a lot of, of dangerous situations.
Chris, can you turn your TV down, please?
I don't have a TV on.
Is there, uh, is there another device playing the meeting?
No, there is not.
All right, we got an echo. I'm sorry. Thank you.
No problem. Sorry about that.
No problem. Mary?
Um, yeah, I just want to echo what our Chair said with respect to, um, I wish we were the ones that grant the permit, but it's the state. We can put reasonable regulations on it, and whatever the use is down the road, again, it's not within our power to, um, grant or deny a permit, which we don't do anyway, based on what they might want to do. But I am very sensitive to these comments, because now we've heard from more than one resident that they're speeding, not only is the road narrow, but they're speeding down the road. We've had two different residents comment upon the speed of the tractor-trailers. So, uh, I, I think that that's something that we should be able to address, maybe perhaps with the police detail, or perhaps, um, you know, monitoring their speed so that they're, you know, abiding by, uh, abiding by the, the rules on that road. And it is a very residential road. We know that. It's narrow. Um, I myself have a running group that runs on that road, and it is a narrow road. And now we know from more than one resident that they're speeding trucks. So I think that we need to try to alleviate at least that problem, um, because, um, that's a reasonable regulation. If that's not a safe road for the residents because of the speed of these tractor-trailers, I think that is within our power to, um, address. I would hope it is. No, um... Yeah.
Is there anyone else on the public line that would like to speak to the public hearing?
Yeah, this is, uh, Chris Lindsay at sixty-nine Shattuck Road. Um, I can tell you, the, at sixty-seven Shattuck Road, the road goes so narrow, it's barely two cars wide. Uh, trucks come down that road, like everybody said, you have to, once you get past the first corner on the road, you, there's no way you're getting around a truck. You have to really work hard to get around those trucks. Um, I don't think it's safe. The road's not designed at this end of the road for those big trucks. I know at the beginning, you know, when, when Kabinsky had his, at the beginning of the road, they redid the road, the very beginning, it, it's made for trucks. This end of the road is not designed to hold that size trucks, and, and the time wise as well. Um, this morning, there was a truck came by. I saw the first truck come by this morning, six-twenty-five this morning. It's ridiculous.
Thank you. Is there any other thing?
Thank you.
Well, the other, the one of, the one other thing I do is...
No, go ahead.
Okay, um, I also, I, I was wondering why at that end of the project, because I know those trails, I've been out there many times, is there any way that it can be accessed off of the eighty, can they, you know, do some work on the, on the on-ramp, on the eighty-four, and, and pull in that side? Where, considering the lot is literally right there?
I think Mr. Bartlett already addressed that.
And the old maps may show that road going through, and it, it obviously did at one time before they built eighty-four, but there's no access to eighty-four at this point, um, in a road that...
Can, can I ask another question of Mr. Bartlett?
Can I get your name, please?
Uh, Chris Brennan, fifty-two, Shattuck Road.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is, my question is, the road that you're using now to access it, did you not have to clear some, some of that road in order to get back to the lot that you're on? How is that different from clearing something from eighty-four or Route fifteen?
The road that we are...
We are disrupting residential.
The road that we're using was an existing road. Alls that we did, we, we had to widen it in a few places on the corners to get the trucks through, but it was an existing road. Actually, the spot that we're using for the guarding area was, uh, the site of a sawmill setup in the nineteen-sixties, when the previous owner had a sawmill operation on that site.
And in the sixties, that road did go out to eighty-four and Route fifteen, so there is access there somewhere.
I know there was a little bit of a point up there.
And any resident on this road will tell you that was not a road. You had to do a lot of work there. So we have to be careful what terminology we use. I asked that question.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the public hearing?
Yes.
Can I get your name, please, sir?
Dale Farrell, fifty-eight, Shattuck Road.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to raise my displeasure with the large trucks going down the road, especially in a narrow road it is, and in the winter is one thing, but when it comes summertime, we like to enjoy our yards, and I'm sure these large trucks traveling by, and we have documented, uh, trucks going by as early as five o'clock in the morning, and that would be on a five-day-a-week basis. We have evidence of that. So to say that there's only an occa- occasional one is not true. If there's any way we could enforce this, and to date, no one has been en- enforcing the regulations that are already in place. So therefore, to grant an additional timeframe for the, uh, activities such as this to begin all summer, and I have a, a large yard, which we usually enjoy in the summer, and I'm hesitant to think of what it's going to be like on a nice summer day with these large trucks going back and forth right on, on the road. Uh, I, I'm extremely displeased with this activity.
Okay, thank you, Dale. Um, Mr. Bartlett, I know Mr. Brennan had asked a question about, how long do you anticipate this harvesting going on?
Right. I anticipate to be done with the Suijak property in two to three weeks, weather permitting. The Pioppi project would take an additional two to three weeks, weather permitting. So I would, I would anticipate at this point, provided we don't get a lot of wet weather, an awful lot of wet weather in the next month, that we should be pretty close to being done the first part of April, uh, mid-April at the latest.
Okay, thank you. And Jeff, anyone else?
I'm going to check. Uh, good evening. Is there anyone else on the public line that would like to speak to the logging application?
Hi, this is Mike Monopoly, forty-five, Shattuck Road. Again, I just have one other quick question. Um, with logging and surveying, I believe there are some bylaws around wet ground. Um, so if the, if the ground is too wet, basically, it's supposed to be done during frozen months, from what I understand. Is that true?
Yes, it's, um...
So it's not frozen? Hey, I'm looking at the town bylaws right now.
Work, yeah, work shall be performed when the ground is dry, frozen, or otherwise stable.
Mm-hmm.
So the next couple of weeks are going to be real muddy, and I'm assuming that there's not going to be much logging going on, if that's correct, because of the, uh, the amount of, the, the ground is saturated. I mean, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty obvious. So, in reality, how long is this going to take?
There are portions of that property that are significant amounts of gravel, so even with wet weather, they are not wet ground conditions, so to speak. They still support the machinery, so...
Right, but the road to it, Shattuck Road, that, that road there is all mud.
I'm going to lower that.
Shattuck, Shattuck Road is paved. The woods road itself is gravel, with gravel thawing a little this time of year. Yes, it's a little soupy on top at the, you know, on some days, so, um...
Right, but nonetheless, we're going to have dirt on our road and mud from those trucks. Is that going to be cleaned, or is that part of the plan to clean that mud after the... Is that gonna be cleaned, or is that part of the plan to clean that mud after the fact?
There's, there is some sand tracked out there. Yes, we have brushed it off once. They're planning on brushing it off again soon.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak to the public hearing this evening?
Yes.
Um, go ahead.
Oh, Rose Roddy, 62 Shattuck Road.
Go ahead.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear from Mr. Bartlett. How is the debris and the logs transported from Shattuck Road to Hall? Which road do you take? I'm worried about other roads, not just Shattuck Road in Sturbridge, about the wear and tear. When I look at the tonnage that came out recently, I am concerned. So please address that.
They're taking the public roads that they're permitted to take. The trucks are operating in a manner, taking public roads. So...
Okay, and Mrs. Roddy, there's also a bond in place to cover any damage to the road?
Yes, Madam Selectman, I would just like to point out, the bridge going over 84 is developing huge potholes, especially during the, at the joints that go over the bridge. I'm noticing they're getting bigger and bigger, so that's why I'm asking Mr. Bartlett, which roads do the trucks transport the material? Please answer the question.
Yes, they, they have to go over the bridge on 84. And I'm sure there's other trucks that use that same bridge.
Okay, anyone else, Jeff?
Anyone else that would like to speak to the public hearing?
I have another question.
And this is?
Chris Brennan, 52 Shattuck Road.
Thank you, Chris.
Sorry if this sounds repetitive, but I, I can't, I can't let this go. So, um, the selectmen don't have the, you know, you don't have the authority about how they access it. Can I find out how do, who has that authority? How do we find, how do we make this better for the residents on Shattuck Road? Why, who makes the decision which access they take? Is there anything that protects us?
Well, Chris, when they go to the conservation, you know, conservation, as you know, looks at the wetlands and everything. If there is no access, then they have to go to the DPW for curb cuts. However, in this case, it's already accessible.
Which they had to create. So they could have created it from the other direction as well. But, thank you very much for your answer.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the public hearing? Oh, anyone else?
Okay, Mary.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I had a question too, and maybe a comment. Since the state is the issuing authority for the forest harvesting permit, perhaps also the safety concerns should be addressed by the state. You know, they should be able to let the state know that they think the road is too narrow, the cars are, the trucks are speeding, that type of thing. If they've got safety concerns, then they could also, because it's the state that issues the permit, as we said before, we can put reasonable regulations in terms of what time of day, the days of the week, that type of thing, protecting our wetlands by going through conservation. But the permit itself is issued by the state. So perhaps some of these concerns should be addressed to the state. Because it's not often, you know, we, we, there are a fair amount of harvest permitting requests, and I can't remember the last one that had this many residents troubled by, by what's happening. It doesn't often happen. Usually it's, it's quite smooth, and we don't have complaints. But tonight, we've heard from, I don't know, four or five residents on the road, all echoing similar, similar problems. So maybe we can give them an address that they can write to the state if they feel so inclined. But I personally would like to put some kind of police detail there to ensure that these truckers are staying within the speed limit. Because if they are speeding, and they get tickets, they're gonna slow down. So I think that we should at least kind of patrol that area in the next several weeks, to ensure that they're abiding by the speed limit.
Kind of to add to Mary's point, I don't know if it's possible to put a temporary speed adjustment on that road, and slow that road down during construction, so that the trucks would have to go even slower to make it a safer environment if it is narrow, it is creating a dangerous environment. Perhaps we can slow it down during work. Is that something that the authorities do?
Well, there's a process for changing speed limits and putting signs on roads. So I'm not too sure.
It'll be a work though.
What, what is the speed limit on Shattuck? Do any residents know?
What's the what?
Butch, Butch, do you know what the speed limit on Shattuck is?
Speed limit, 35. There's no speed limit.
There's no speed limit.
Hang on, I'll go there.
Hi, this is Dale Favreau again, if I could speak?
The local roads are 25 miles an hour, the local...
Madam Chair, we have a request to speak. Should they, go ahead.
This is Dale Favreau again. I've lived here since 1973. And at 62 Shattuck Road, when we moved here, the road was dirt from that point on, and there was a large sign that said, "Private property, no entrance." The road was tarred at that time, so the school bus could go to the end of the Shattuck Road to pick up children that resided at that time. There was a load limit on this road, and it was tested in court because there was a proposal back in the 1970s, and then again in the 1980s, to have some construction performed down there. And it was tested in court, and the landowner, Mr. Suijak, had heavily contested that this road quote path was going through his driveway. And he won that court case, that it was not a road, it was only, at that time, a little, what we called two-track, which was like a, a footpath. And it was prevented, it was prevented from letting trucks go down to that particular piece of property. In order to be a friendly neighbor, he bulldozed the road through the woods. And it was on a path, and that is the, the system they're using now. When they leave the paved area, they're entering onto a man-made path that was, recently, they had bulldozes, bulldozed it all the way down to the end of Mr. Peopie's property, so they could access that area. But it is only a dirt path, where this heavy construction equipment is traversing. When they come off this private property, and they enter the paved part, that is the only part that is Shattuck Road. And at that point, as I said years ago, the restriction on this road was not the speed as much as it was load limit. And the load limit was limited to a, a two-axle dump truck. So, we're now using equipment that is much larger than that. So if you were to test some of the conditions, I'm sure we could dig up and find out what the load limit is on this road. But, um, that's the area that I'm concerned about this summer, with these huge trucks. Thank you, I'll pass.
Okay, Butch?
I, I have a document from the state that gives all the speed limits, but it's under 40, it doesn't lift it, so it's either 35 or 30.
Actually, I think it's posted as 25. I did talk with the operator, with many of the truck drivers before they started. I'm aware that it's a very narrow road. I'm aware that, you know, it, it is, can be a hazardous situation if the truck drivers are not driving slowly. They have been instructed to drive slowly, give the right of way to the cars when they can. Uh, I, I understand that, you know, with the house close to the road, even somebody traveling at 15 or 20 miles an hour seems fairly fast when you're sitting in a chair watching them go by, but they're probably not exceeding the speed limit.
Okay, anything else from the board? Okay, is there a motion to end the public hearing?
Uh, can I make one more question, please? Chris Brennan, 52 Shattuck.
Okay, okay, last one, Chris.
Thank you, Selectmen Dowling. You mentioned contacting the state about this issue. Do you have any suggestions whom in the state we would contact to have questions about this? And now, especially in light of Mr. Favreau's explanation about a load limit on the road at that end of the street, there is a gas line that goes through the end of our street, and now that brings up another issue for, in my mind, that we should ask the state about.
Yes, thank you. I personally don't know, but I'm sure if we requested our town administrator to give you the address and phone number of the licensing authority of the state. I mean, when, when you want to harvest your property, the permit is issued by the state. So the, the local select people, right. And then what we are allowed to do is kind of regulate the, the plan. So, we ensure that our wetlands are protected, as our chair pointed out. They post a bond, so our roads are protected. And we put in, you know, what we hope is honored in terms of hours of operation, and not operating at dark, and all these type of things. But that's the limit of what we can do. So I'm sure our, you know, if you requested our, we'll request our administrator to give you the address of who actually issues the permit. And I don't know if, you know, they'll look at your complaints and concerns or not, but I do know there's a number of you that have concerns about the width of the road and that type of thing. I, again, am gonna echo, and I hope that we do it, that we put a police detail there, to ensure that they are going the proper speed limit, at least in the next several weeks. I know Mr. Bartlett, in good faith, is trying to honor the, the permit and our regulations, but he's not in control of those truck drivers 24/7. And I am gonna respectfully disagree. If, if that road is 25 miles an hour, that's a crawl. That's very, very slow. And I think the residents would know if the trucks were only going 25 miles an hour. They're saying they're going faster. And I think you can tell. Because, as I said, 25 miles an hour is quite slow. I know on our road, towards the bottom of the hill, it's 25 miles an hour or 20 miles, and you're crawling. So I can't imagine that all these residents would have the same observation about how fast these trucks are going, if they're honoring that speed limit. So, you know, I'm hoping that we increase our visibility in terms of our police. And we do that from time to time. If they're speeding on a certain road, we do place a patrol officer there to ensure that the speed limit's being honored. But I think we should be able to at least do that. And perhaps our town administrator can give you the address and phone number of the licensing authority for harvest permit. And, you know, that's the best I can say tonight. I, I do feel badly that this operation is not going as smoothly as other harvesting operations in other parts of, in other, at other times in other neighborhoods. We haven't had this many problems, this many concerned residents. So, I'm hoping that Mr. Bartlett goes back to, and lets everybody know that the residents are quite concerned. But the...
Okay, Chris, do you have a pen?
Thank you.
Okay, the issuing party is the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR, and their phone number is 857-406-0175.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the director's agent was Chris Fong, and it was issued by Priscilla G.E.I.G.I.S.
Thank you very much, Selectmen Blanchard.
Okay, no problem, Chris. Okay, can we have a motion now to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Chase?
Second.
Anybody who votes?
Did you ask, I'm sorry, me, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, Mary, yes.
Okay.
Chase, yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, is somebody willing to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the forest cutting plan, subject to the six conditions that we normally would have. And, and, in addition to that, I would like to add the conditions that, that it be, that there would be oversight monitored by an independent party, someone other than the, the harvester. And that, that party will have to be identified and will be accountable for, for monitoring the work. And, and the, prior to the start of work, this independent party, the board of selectmen, be notified who the monitoring party is. So that's condition number seven. And condition number eight would also be a recommendation of the Conservation Commission, which would be that, that, uh, well, they have to notify the Conservation Commission prior to start of work, but if there are any changes at all in the plan, the Conservation Commission would have to receive notification of any changes prior to the start of any activities. And, and that the Conservation Commission be given access to the site to perform inspections.
Okay, with prior notice given?
Prior, prior notice to the owner.
I'll second that, Mary.
Okay, Jeff, do you have a question?
Just a, just a clarification. As we discussed before, Mr. Bartlett is providing oversight. He's not the logger, he's the, he developed the forest cutting plan. Is Mr. Bartlett acceptable to oversee this, this project as well as the Suijak project, or do we want someone different?
Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any objection, as long as he possibly is a little more diligent watching the trucks this time. He possibly is a little more diligent watching... watching the trucks this time. He possibly is a little more diligent watching the trucks this time.
Anybody else?
Can I, uh, speak?
I get enough. Be back here. Okay, Mr. Bartlett, you do, you are quite familiar with the, uh, six original conditions, right, as far as time and days?
Yes.
Okay, so, does somebody want to second Mike's motion?
I think Mary did.
Can I speak? You gotta make a comment.
Mary, can you...
And Mary, you second? Okay, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all for participating.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I just had a, you know, I was hoping that we could ask the town administrator to have the DPW regularly check the road for mud and bill the police and, um, you know, the situation, so that everybody's on the same page moving forward.
Oh, yeah, that's not unreasonable.
Take care of it.
Soon as you won't have to be plowing too much, which...
Yeah. I'll, we'll get up there a couple times a week at least.
That's it. Not before seven.
Yeah, you can email me through the website anytime, anybody, if you have any concerns.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have department report, building department. Nelson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, my department report at this meeting is going to be for January. It's going to do like I usually do, daily operations, uh, do permits, applications, issue permits, inspect sites, and, uh, and, um, we answer questions. As far as, as zonings, uh, we answer questions, we review zoning questions, and we give opinion. Um, this month, residential building permits for the month of January, there were fifty-seven issued, a total of nine thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, new commercial building permits for Ja- for January, and, um, it was five. And, um, a correction on that paper, the electrical, gas, and plumbing permits should be four January. It says November, December crossed it out. Uh, electrical permits were five, gas permits two, plumbing eighteen. And then went on to, uh, specific ongoing commercial projects. The first one that was up was the, uh, Pilot Travel Center. Um, I gave a rundown basically of what's happened so far. Um, they hammered the, uh, old restaurant, the large restaurant, the sixteen thousand some odd square feet. Uh, I explained how they're making it more user-friendly by having that route going in, going out. They're, uh, they have the gas station pumps for the smaller vehicles in the front, and the larger ones, they want to be in the back, so they're going to be separate. So, if you pull into the front with your vehicles, you can't intermingle with the, uh, large travel trailers. Uh, as far as the new travel center building itself, that's almost fourteen thousand square feet. It's, um, when they made their sheet out, they're hoping to, uh, get a, uh, CCO, which is a temporary, temporary certificate of occupancy. They haven't got it yet, but it's getting really close, hopefully within the next two days. Uh, I think most people are aware they needed the poll. Every, uh, reliable permanent, uh, redundant power, but there was even more to it than that. I mean, they needed some paperwork to do their closeout. I got the closeout book, and this always happens with, uh, temporary occupancy. We end up getting a list. We're from Massachusetts, they're from Tennessee, so they need guidance. So, we, we went out of our way and helped them as far as getting a list together. We're working on it even as late as today. We're getting really close. It's going really smooth down there. Everybody's happy. Then the other thing is New England cold storage pickup road. Everybody knows, you know, that the, the, we have that large, uh, freezer building. It's a seventy-four thousand square foot. Uh, they haven't done a lot of work on that recently, but they're still planning to do it. We have mobile retirement community, there's sixty-five lots. Uh, right now, as far as the access that's going through planning now, uh, once the access road goes through planning, I believe they're planning to stop those lots. Uh, Stonewell Grove, they're still, uh, working on their lower level. I haven't signed a final yet, I haven't heard from them. Uh, four-twenty-three Main, that's next to the old Basketville. It's where they, uh, apartments. Um, anybody going by there, you'll see that, uh, the outside's finished. They're working on the inside now. They've got the insulation inspection done. They're putting up their sheetrock. They're going to start to do their finished work. And then just recently, we, we got that new New England cold storage on Ninety Chelton Road. It's a different, uh, cold storage building. That's going through planning. It's present. Noble Energy, uh, Travel Center, they put a lot of money into the old truck stuff. So, they, they plan to continue. Um, Rapsgalian, I've got it listed on there. Uh, I would just like to mention that people, when, when people say addresses, I think it helps, if you say it's crossing the senior center, it's actually, you enter it off of Arnold Grove, big red building, and it's the upper part of the building that they're going to be using. Um, they're working on it now. I, I've did a couple inspections in there. There's a few things that, that they have to do. Um, it's going well. Cornerstone Bank, uh, they're going to update their front entrance. Um, they haven't started yet. They, they have been issued a permit. Anybody, you know, that wants to see the project, it's, it's in the building office. Then some of the newer things coming up, of course, is the public parking lot that we bought from the old, uh, hotel. Uh, I listed that cold storage because it's Ninety Chelton Road. Uh, there's going to be new Fuel Island in Canopy at one-twenty-two Lucky Mart. Um, it seems to have slowed down, but I think it's, it's going through conservation and dealing with that right now. And one of the other things is the tree farm at six-fifty and six-eighty. It's actually, it's two lots that we grew together on the old Route Fifteen. And, uh, I know I did a review on it as far as, as comments for planning. It appears they're coming off Fifteen. They got a small building way to the far side. Uh, and as far as everything else, uh, that's my report. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Nelson, I noticed the update on the permit. I don't know if I'm the only one, but the only page I have on permits, uh, the, uh, is it a single page?
No, there's a whole one, I should have.
There's two pages.
Yeah.
Oh, I only have one.
One, page is one-fifty-eight and one-fifty-nine of the packet?
One-fifty-nine.
I don't have one-fifty-nine.
All right, we'll get it to you.
That's, hey, yeah, I can, uh, I can pick it up anytime.
Okay.
Okay, nothing else? Mary?
Yeah, I just have a few comments more than questions. Uh, Nelson, I, thank you for the update. Um, I'm going to address a couple things. I know that you gave us the u- update on the Pilot Travel Center. I know there was some disappointment on behalf of those owners that they were not able to open, and we actually got a letter from them yesterday, um, indicating that, um, they still would like that temporary, um, certificate of occupancy. But I just want to say to the record that, um, you know, I support you, and you're the person who is the expert on our, the Massachusetts Building Code. And I think you have a difficult job because, you know, sometimes you have to put the brakes on projects if, if the code's not being honored. And, um, I understand that you brought in a state inspector, and I also want to say that I support you on that, because if you need technical assistance, that is what the state is there for. Um, so I just want to say that, you know, I support you on that. I hope they get their power soon, but that's a problem with National Grid. Um, and maybe the, maybe the Board of Selectmen can issue a letter through our town administrator urging National Grid to try to, you know, accelerate their commitment to open and providing that pole. But, um, I hope, yes.
Okay, Nelson?
I, I, I worked real diligently. I worked Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I personally talked to Massa Life. I got the poles there on a Wednesday. I got the wires there. On a, uh, I think it was the next day, they, they actually have power now.
Oh, okay.
They were, yeah, today they were putting their primary underneath to the transformer in the main building. Once they get it hitched up, they either have permanent power or they will have it in the morning. So, we, we should be all set pretty much on a temporary. Uh, I do have a, a, a list of things they need to do. I think they've got them done. I mean, I can read them right now if you want. Um, it's a lot to take in, but, I mean, there's reasons why I couldn't issue the permit. You know, part of it was electricity, and the other part was a close-up document. It's, it's very complicated when you issue a temporary permit. It's, a lot of people think they, they, they've got all the answers to it, but they don't. It, it's time-consuming, it's complicated, and we worked very well with the company in, because we, we, when I say we, my inspectors, myself, state inspectors, we all want this to open as soon as it can, obviously because of the tractor trailers. And I think that if you were to ask that company, they're very happy with us. They, they feel we tried a hundred percent to get that open, which we're going to. And like I say, if you want, I'm prepared to read the list off at this meeting. I have no problem with it. I mean, I, you know...
I mean, if you want to, if, hold on. If, if you want to send it to us, that's great. My, my main, um, purpose in, in saying this is that we love having new business. It is an out-of-state, you know, they're, they're Tennessee. It's Massachusetts, um, Building Code that governs. Um, their letter did go on and on and about power operated by generators in Texas and other parts of the country, which is great. I hope they're successful, and I welcome the business. But in the end, it's your call as the building inspector whether or not a temporary certificate is appropriate, and it's also up to the state. So, I just want to give you my support. I'm also going to address one other elephant in the room, um, and, and say that, uh, you are wearing receipt of your intent to, um, retire. And I just have a couple of comments. Number one, I wish you all the best. I think you've been a very good employee for seven years. I think you have a difficult job as a building inspector and as a zoning enforcement officer, because again, businesses don't want to be told you can't have a sign in this window, you can't have a sign in that window. It's a difficult job, and I think that you toe the line well trying to be reasonable with businesses. And personally, I was hoping, I know you've got a lot going on, and you're going on a, a, a leave of absence, um, federal, federal medical leave of absence. And I was hoping that you'd make your decision about retiring when you returned from that leave of absence. Um, sounds like you've made it already, and, um, of course, that's your call, and I wish you the best. But, um, I just wanted to put that out there. Um, so...
I, uh, you know, I'm thinking about it. I, I definitely, it, it's hard for me to decide right now because of the personal merits, which was, I don't know what's going to happen with my wife. And, uh, I would prefer to make the decision later in, in, in the May or so, and I had mentioned it, but it didn't seem to work out, so I don't know what happened.
Okay.
Well, yeah. I mean, you gave us a, a letter of intent, but, um, there's, there's no resignation yet, but there's nothing for us to approve because you didn't resign. And I just want to say that you are a valued employee, and I wish you the best on your leave of absence. Hold on, because we might not see him. He's going to get ready for a leave of absence, and I wanted to say-
Well, I know, but I just want, I just want to say it wasn't a letter of resignation. It was a letter of retirement.
Uh, I, yeah, it was a letter of intent to retire, I know, so there's nothing to accept. But-
Yep.
With, he still later on has to, you still give a letter of resignation later. That's typically how it, how it's done. You're saying no?
No.
Well, Nelson, well, Nelson, you didn't file anything with the state yet, did you?
No.
Okay, so he, so the bottom line is he hasn't retired if he didn't file anything with the state. And again, he may not be here, so I wanted to say this piece because he may not give another report until he goes on a leave of absence. And, um...
Well, we've already started recruiting for the position. He made his intention known to retire. We've got to hurry up and get someone in here to do this job.
You're, you're muted. You're muted, Jeff.
No, it, uh, no, it's-
Five years ago.
TOS on your screen is, is mine.
I know, I didn't hear everything you said, though.
Well, Nelson gave his retirement, so in order to keep going, we've already started recruiting for the position.
But he's not, he's still an employee. Right now, legally, he's still an employee. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that, that's the case. He didn't file anything with the state yet.
Okay, Mary, some-
That he hasn't resigned. He's going to do what he wants, Mary, but he hasn't resigned yet.
I know. Mary, he's not signing, he's retiring.
But he didn't retire yet either, Mary.
It's common practice when somebody gives their intention to retire or resign, that you can stop the process to higher, so you don't have a big gap in between. That's all I'm saying. Okay?
I, and I'm saying I believe it was premature, um, that's all. Um, there was a lot going on, and I will leave it at that.
According to, Mary, according to the letter, he is still, uh, has the position until, uh, June thirtieth.
Right, right.
Well, Mary, we-
I would, so, so I think it was premature to, uh, advertise this early. Secondly, I will make a motion that we, uh, that the board sit in executive session with Nelson to go over, um, the reasons for his abrupt retirement. I, I would like to, uh, schedule a chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A-one, uh, executive ske- session at, uh, before our next meeting, with, with, uh, the board and Nelson, uh, to discuss, uh, the issues behind his, uh, his sudden retirement.
Um, Michael, I'll have to look up which exemption that is to see if it, um...
That's the one.
Is it that?
It's section-
I'll look it up because I don't have my stuff here right now.
Yeah, but it's, uh, chapter thirty-eight, section, uh, twenty-one, A, paragraph, sub chap, paragraph one. You can look it up later, but that's, that's what I want to schedule.
Stop it. It's a, Mike, it's a valid request, if it's a valid reason. I just need to be sure, that's all.
Okay, okay, if I'm wrong, just change the section reference, but...
Okay, Mary?
I, I just, I support, um, Michael's request for that as well. I don't know, if I want to see how the rest of the board feels.
Um...
Do I get a say in this?
Kind of.
Let's, let's get the elephant out of the room. I'll go to that executive session, and I'll give my side of the story. I'm the only one that hasn't been asked about this.
Okay.
Uh, I would, I would support an executive session. I, I think that, uh, I think this needs to be behind closed doors.
Yes, well, Chase, I don't disagree with an executive session if it's one of the valid reasons. I just don't happen to have the list of them here. Okay, um, so I will- Okay, um, so I will look it up. If it's a valid reason, we'll schedule an executive session. Not a problem. Okay?
Do, do I get to participate?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
Oh, yeah.
All right, wonderful.
Um, I, I think at a point I would like the town administrator to participate, but I would like to talk to, uh, to this building, this building, uh, inspector, building commissioner. Uh, I would like to talk to him so he can speak freely. And then I would like to talk to the, uh, town administrator so he can, uh, speak freely. I don't want to have a, a debate. I want to get, you know.
Mike, I don't think that's, let me look it up because there are rules and regulations on how it's handled, okay?
Okay. And I'm, and I, you know, I have the exact wording if you want it, but, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll give you the, the wording of, for the, uh, for that, that section. And this is the valid reason for, for having an executive session.
I would, I would recommend you do this one in person, like you did the retreat.
I think it should be face to face. I, I concur with the, the town administrator.
So if you're going to do this before your next meeting, I would schedule it for five o'clock and then you can adjourn and go home and then have the remote public meeting. If you don't think that's enough time, then pick a time.
What about 4:30?
Mary.
Nelson?
I agree with the town administrator. I'd like to have it, uh, so I could be face to face because it's going to be a lot easier for me.
Mm-hmm.
Face to face with who?
With the board.
Because I can show all the material I can show you and it's going to be a lot easier than me presenting it on Zoom meeting or GoToMeeting. So I appreciate the fact that he wants to have it face to face. I thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Nelson. We'll be in touch.
Okay.
So I, I made the motion for the executive session.
I'll second.
Okay, my only discussion is if it fits. That's all I'm saying.
Mary, I, I assume when you say you're going to check, you're going to check with Labor Council or what, where are you going to check?
Mary, you're muted. Mary, we can't hear you. We lost, wait a minute, timeout. We lost audio somehow. Hold on. Wait a minute, I don't hear anybody. Can anybody hear me? Nope. Wait a minute, give me one minute, one minute.
Please enter your access code followed. To enable audio controls, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash. This conference will now be recorded.
Can you hear me now? Are we back?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sorry. I missed a bunch of that conversation, so let me know what you need me to do.
Well, we have to pick a time and a place.
Okay. Well, we're going to meet in, I thought we were going to meet in person.
Yeah, I thought we were meeting in person. That was what it was all about.
4:30? On what, 15?
4:30, March 15?
Is that another Monday?
Yeah, it's before our next Board of Selectmen meeting.
And we'll go home and sign on.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, we have, uh, consideration and possible actions on vehicle replacements for Charles River Service doing business in Sturbridge Car Service. Oh, sorry, I forgot the town administrator's update.
All right, um, just to expedite this along, you have my comments on my, uh, report, just a couple of new things. Um, we did get a response back from the Open Space Committee on the right of first refusal for the 150, 133 and other, uh, parcels in that letter. Uh, they are not interested in the town acquiring the property, but would like us to look at possible trail connections with the new owners if it's sold. Um, you've gotten that, copy that email. Um, CPC caregiver, um, in our contract with them, in our host community agreement with them, there's a provision that says we can reopen if they've agreed to other host community agreements that may be more beneficial or have more beneficial elements to them. They've provided two to us, Fitchburg and Marlboro, which you all have. Um, town council is reviewing those to see if there are adjustments that could be made to our host community agreement, uh, based upon the sections of those, uh, HCAs with Fitchburg and Marlboro. Uh, if we could get a quick, uh, conversation, uh, on the school sidewalk grant that I put in my memo, um, we've gotten a request from the Tantascro Regional School District to, uh, apply for a sidewalk grant on their behalf since they can't apply direct. Um, we've pros, prepared that application. I just need the Board of Selectmen to say okay. Um, and that's all I have.
Hey, how's the board feel on the sidewalk application?
Uh, this is Mike and I, you know, I, I think, uh, it would be a, a good idea to have, uh, sidewalk, uh, for the junior high school. And since it's in Sturbridge, uh, we would be the ones applying. It's, it's, um, I have the question for the town administrator. It says it's a shared spaces DOT grant. Those were for, for COVID, I think, shared spaces, but is it a safe routes to schools grant or is it a shared spaces grant?
I think it's a safer to schools, but they're going under the emergency grant program. Six and one half dozen.
There's money.
You know?
I would make a motion to, uh, to, uh, so that asks, uh, who, who would be signing the, uh, the grant? Would it be the chair of the, chairman of the board or?
It would be the chair.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, to, uh, ask the, uh, chair of the Board of Selectmen to, uh, to sign the application for, uh, a grant for sidewalks at Tantascro Junior High School.
Please hear a second.
I'll second Mike's motion.
Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Hey, is that on the?
Oh, no, that's good.
On the right of first refusal, um, we've heard back from the planning board also that they really don't have any interest. Um, did we hear back from any other board?
Uh, Conservation hasn't met, uh, since the first of February, so they're meeting tomorrow night, so I imagine you'll get responses on that one and the other Hillman for right of first refusal tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
So, the, as far as, uh, if we're requesting easements for trails, is there, is anybody going to be working on that, uh, to, to, so that we know what we're, uh, would be asking for, uh, in the event that it had to be brought to town meeting to get easements for trails across that, those parcels?
I, I just got that email this morning. I haven't had a chance to get into it.
Okay.
Right, I'm not even sure it may be viable. I mean, our only position in here is, you know, either the town buys the land or the deal goes through with, um, the person who, you know, offered the, uh, 155 back.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so we have, um, consideration and possible action on a vehicle replacement for Charles River Service Inc. doing business in Sturbridge Car Service. Any questions on that? Okay, someone want to make a motion?
Do you have a, do you have a page number for this? I'm lost in my paper here.
Uh, 189.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Okay, so we upgraded his car from the previous permit.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to accept the new vehicle for Charles River Services Inc.
There's a second?
Mike, second.
Discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on a tax increment financing agreement with Complete Cold Storage LLC. Jeff, you have a few words on this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Selectmen members. Um, RLS, RLS Complete Cold, or now RLS Complete Logistics, has applied for a TIF for the new facility at 90 Charlton Road. Uh, I believe they, Brian Hedges here this evening, he made a presentation to the board several months ago about this exciting project. Um, they've been through the planning board, uh, they went through the TIF review process with the TIF review committee, uh, and the TIF review committee is recommending the same graduated scale that the town approved for Complete Cold. So that is before you this evening. This would have to be finally approved by town meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Hedge is here to answer any questions if the board has it.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Hedge? Okay, hearing none, does somebody want to make a motion then?
Um, I guess, the, this is Mike and I'll, uh, make the motion to, uh, approve the tax increment financing agreement, uh, between the town of Sturbridge and, um, and, uh, Complete Cold Storage LLC. And that would be, wouldn't that be subject to town meeting approval?
Yes.
Yes, that, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Chase.
Hey, any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Uh, Chase?
Yes, Chase.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, one step closer, Mr. Hedge.
Good job.
Yeah.
Thank you everyone.
Hey, Chase.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Considering Sturbridge.
Thank you. Yep, looking forward to it.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on the disposal of a town of Sturbridge, 1997 Ford S350 DW, Department DPW, sorry, truck and transferring it to the Massachusetts into local insurance. Any questions?
No.
Somebody want to make, oh, Ian?
My only question was, um, why didn't we include this truck in the auction and the other items that were sold recently?
Well, it was, before it was in the accident, it was in good shape. Now it was in an accident.
Oh, I didn't, oh, I didn't know that, but, uh.
It was part of that 49 accident in December. It's got a lot of damage. And they gave us a pretty good offer.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
This is Mike and I'll make a motion first to declare the, the truck as surplus property and to release the, uh, damaged vehicle to Maya for, uh, or pickup by the salvage company. Uh, for the, I think there was, uh, the insurance, um, uh, net insurance amount that we will be receiving is $4,000. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yep, right on the dollar. Hey, is there a second?
I'll second Mike's motion. Ian? Yeah, Chase.
Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
Mike?
Yes, Mike.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have consideration and possible action on a license with National Grid for utility pole with 64 Whittmore Road. Okay, Jeff, you want to sum this up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. Um, we're building a new water pump station on Fisk Hill Road and in order to get power to that pump station, uh, National Grid needs to set two poles, one on our property on Whittmore Road and another on the right of way. You will have a poll hearing for the poll on the right of way at your next meeting, but, um, ordinarily, we would provide an easement to National Grid for the other poll, but since, uh, we would need a town meeting to provide an easement, National Grid is recommending a license with the expectation that the board would present town meeting with an easement for consideration. We could not guarantee National Grid that town meeting would grant the easement. We could only state that in, you know, only request of you all, that if you were so inclined to provide the license, you would include an intention to submit an easement for town meeting for this pole on Whittmore Drive. Whittmore Road, sorry.
Okay, any question, comment? Someone want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the license for National Grid to place a utility pole on 65 Whittmore Road and state the Board of Selectmen's intent to place a proposed easement for this pole on the town meeting warrant for consideration by the town.
I'll second the motion, Ian.
Okay, Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
Mike?
Yes, Mike.
Ian?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. Okay, and I vote yes. Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on the creation of position of deputy fire chief and the approval of the job description thereof. Okay, questions, comments?
Um, this is Mike, and I'll, I, I had, uh, uh, I had talking, talked to Chief Grasso about this, and, uh, I asked for some additional information, which I, we haven't gotten yet, including, uh, you know, uh, you know, with a, just seems like the, with, with only twelve employees in the, uh, fire department, uh, it seems like, uh, to have a deputy chief might be a bit much at, at this time. Uh, so, in my, most of the towns that I know have deputy chiefs have, uh, you know, considerably more firefighters and EMTs than Sturbridge does, uh, with still affiliated community, so I'm, I asked for additional information, and also, uh, uh, the chief had proposed a salary, and we just had a compensation plan done, and if this was in the works, we should have, uh, asked for some, some guidance on compensation, so, I, I still have questions about it at this point. I'm not, you know, not saying no, but I, I need more information.
Okay, Jeff?
This, uh, this position materialized after the survey data was collected for the compensation study. Uh, we are going back to those same towns to, to get comps for this position, um, and we'll go from there, but it was passed when we got that data for this study.
Okay, anyone else? I also, you know, oh, Mary?
No, you go ahead, Mary, go ahead.
Um, I'm also still, I talked to the chief, and chief, there was no, um, salary figures that you looked at, come up with the ninety thousand, which is what I had asked for at the last meeting, and I would still like to see that. Okay, Jeff, you said we're getting it?
Yeah, we're gonna reach out to those same towns we surveyed for the salary study to get their data.
Okay, 'cause I would like to see it, because I still think, um, if the position is warranted, I still think ninety thousand dollars for a position is quite high. Okay, Mary?
Okay, so just for residents watching, Chief, John, Chief Grasso did reach out to all of us and give us an opportunity to meet with him and talk about it, so some questions were answered, and, you know, had this been a brand-new position without, well, we've had a recent, um, resignation, and that person's position, because, um, they were at the high end of the EMT firefighter, I believe amounted to eighty-three thousand, correct, chief?
Um, eighty-two thousand, correct.
Right, okay, so, I mean, had we planned on filling that position and the deputy fire chief, I probably wouldn't have supported it, because I don't think we're in the position to create a new management position for ninety thousand or a hundred thousand dollars right now. But the way the chief explained it to me is, if we are gonna do it, this, this would be an opportune time, because it's not gonna be a total wash, I mean, eighty-three to ninety, one salary, one needs overtime, so let's say it's close to, to being a wash. Um, Chief Grasso did explain that this was also, uh, recommended by the previous town administrator, although the timing wasn't right, I believe you told me. Wasn't it a goal of yours several years ago, chief?
Yes, four years ago when I was hired, I was tasked with creating a long-term succession plan.
Right, but here's the thing, I know I, I, so I'm gonna support it, but at the same time, I know, um, Jeff just indicated that they're gonna, you're gonna reach out to those sixteen communities that the consultants came up with, and, let's see what, let's see what the figure is, because if the figure is out of the ballpark, I mean, maybe it's a hundred and twenty thousand, I don't know, maybe it's gonna be a lot more than that for deputy fire chief, but if it is, if, if Chief Grasso can get somebody good, and it's mark, it's within that competitive market range of ninety thousand, then I'm gonna support it. But, um, you know, when you say you're gonna reach out to the community, I think we should approve the position when we know the, the value that we're going to put it at. So if it's gonna be ninety thousand, I already told you, chief, I support it, because it's almost a wash between, um, previous EMT firefighter who retired, and you're not gonna fill that. But, I don't know, that was my question to you, can we get somebody for ninety thousand? To me, a deputy fire chief, that seemed a little bit low for us to be able to get a deputy fire chief, but if you think you can do it, then I will support it. But I, I think it's gonna need to be close to a wash, um, especially this year, when, you know, the townspeople are hurting with the pandemic, so.
I, I think it's important to note that, um, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, if this gets approved, it has to go back to the personnel committee for classifications, is that correct, Jeff?
That's correct.
Agreed.
So, that classification will establish a, a salary range, and then it's ultimately up to the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator to determine the annual salary, correct, Jeff?
That is correct.
So, I guess it's a little different than what we talked about then, so I thought we were going to try to get somebody for ninety thousand, what if they come back after the comparison and ninety thousand's not in the ballpark? I mean, and that wouldn't be unusual, because we know from the compensation study that most of our salaries were below market range, a lot of them were, especially the mid-department heads were below the market analysis, so, i- is this something that we can approve of after we know what the salary range would be?
I'm sure that's a possibility.
I understand the question.
Well, I guess, when chief, when the chief met with us, right, one, one of the reasons that he advocated for this is that it wasn't gonna cost the town money, because Mary Lou Volpe's position at eighty-three thousand, um, he's not planning on filling that position, he's planning on filling it with the deputy fire chief for ninety, so he made the argument, if you will, that it's going to be close to a wash, and that's a salaried employee, and he wouldn't be paying overtime, so he pretty much said it's going to be a wash money-wise, and that was contingent upon us all, well, some of us saying, okay, we support it, but for us to support it tonight, but then not know what the salary range is gonna be, because we gotta look at the sixteen-town comparison, and then it's gotta go to the personnel committee, you know, what if the range is one-ten to one-thirty, or, you know, a hundred to, we're, we're kinda being asked to approve of, of a position when we don't, at this point, now know what the salary's gonna be. I, when I met with you, chief, I was under the impression that you were gonna put this out for ninety thousand, and you were confident that you could get somebody for ninety thousand. Um, that's, and now I carry on with the difference tonight.
There's a handful, if I may, there's a handful of towns that was in the chief's original survey that crossover with the towns that we used for the salary and compensation study, there's, there's some crossover, but we didn't ask all of them. So before we set on ninety, which is pretty much where some of those towns come in at, I wanna make sure we vet all the towns. Now, some of them might, may not have the position, some of them may not respond, but I wanna vet all of them, because if we're gonna do it for all these other non-union positions, we oughta do it for this one. But ninety seems to be, ninety seems to be reasonable from the data we've collected so far.
I totally agree with you, but I think we're being asked now then to approve a, a new position when we don't know what the salary range is gonna be. Maybe the better approach is to get the input from these sixteen towns, so then we know what the salary range would be in terms of approving of a new position, then we'll have, like, you know, because.
Well, before we, before we go all that, I think one of the concerns we have is, is there support on the board for this position, right?
If, um.
Uh, you know, to get some feedback on that, that would be okay.
Well, I think some of us are of the opinion would support it, but we do need to look at the salary, the money.
Okay.
The money is a lot, so I would be willing to wait till we get that information before we move forward. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. Mike is also looking for some more information.
Mm-hmm. One side?
Yeah.
So, is the board willing to continue the discussion on this until we get more information? Ian?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. Mary?
Yes, and I, and to answer the double question, um, I already told the chief, I do support, in theory, this position, yes, and I supported it wholeheartedly, I thought it was set at ninety, from, based on our discussion, um, so I do support the position, I think it's good to have another management position that's not union, so when Chief Grasso goes on vacation, there's somebody that can, um, you know, assume his duties, it, it makes sense to me, but it was also presented to me in a way that ninety thousand dollars was going to be the salary. So I agree that we should know what the salary range is, how it falls in line with these comparison towns, and then we'd have to make the decision whether that, you know, we're going to support a new position, when we know what the financial ramifications are.
Okay, Mike, you willing to, uh, wait until we get more information?
Yeah, well, yeah, that, but, basically, what I would move would be to, uh, uh, table action on this matter until, uh, the additional information is, is, the board receives additional information, uh, based on the sixteen towns, uh, you know, how many of these towns do have deputy fire chiefs, and, uh, and what is the sixtieth percentile and seventieth percentile salary ranges?
Chief? Yeah, a couple, couple of points to, um, to clarify, um, the ninety thousand dollar salary was the amount that I had proposed when I made the proposals, Jeff, um, that was based on a survey that was performed by the District Seven Fire Chiefs and elected bargaining agreement. That, that's where I came up with the ninety thousand. To Mr. Supernos' question, um, every one of the sixteen towns has a deputy chief, some call it an assistant chief, but every one of them has a deputy chief.
Okay, but I guess everyone agreed, and Michael, was that a form of a motion you made?
Yes, to table it until we get the information on the salary range.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Okay, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? So we'll see you again, chief.
Thank you for your time, have a great night.
You too, chief, you too. Okay, next on the agenda, we have consideration and possible action on the adoption of classification and compensation study plan.
Um, yeah, I, I personally feel that it's still premature for us to vote on this tonight, because, uh, I've read it very carefully, and I don't feel like the process has, um, run its course, because if you look at the, um, the consultant's rather lengthy memo to, to us and to the town, on page two, it says draft and final re- report preparation. So, a preliminary analysis of the data they compiled and what they recommended was shared with the town, feedback from town administration, so I assume that was, that was shared with Jeff, Jeff gave, reviewed it, and incorporated some recommendations into it, right, is that right, Jeff?
Yeah, there were two, there were two feedback things I had to give, one was on the police chief's salary and whether or not we included in the survey data the educational incentive, and the other one was the merit versus step thresholds, that's it.
Okay, okay, so, um, and then it says the draft report has been prepared by the consultant, um, which is this, this draft report, so now we have the draft report, but then the third bullet says a presentation of these draft findings will be conducted for the town leader. So we haven't had any presentation by the consultant yet, and I think that we can benefit by that, you know, in the same way that the feasibility study, the consultants came in and, and, um, showed it, so, you know, we paid for this, and to me, the next step is their presentation, because then the final bullet says, once the presentation is made and review comments are returned by the town, a final report will be prepared and transmitted electronically. So, the town leaders, I assume, are us, we should have an opportunity to have this presentation by the consultant, perhaps when they're going through their various charts, we may have more questions, I already have some, but I'd rather ask the consultant directly, and then we give our comments, and then they give a final draft, so I really feel like we're skipping, uh, a hoop here.
Well, that was.
Prematurely, when we, we don't have to, I think we're entitled to that presentation by the consultant, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, um, and I'd like to hear how the board feels, other, other board members.
Okay, Jeff, you gonna say something?
Yes, that presentation, uh, the ownership of this document was the Personnel Committee, and that presentation took place with the Personnel Committee.
Well, we're also town leaders, it should take, it should be presented to us as well, with our comments, because we're the ultimate ones that have to approve it, the Personnel Committee gives recommendations, but we're the town leaders that actually have to approve of this document, so it doesn't make sense that the presentation is not given to us, we're the ones that are ultimately accountable for approving.
Are there specific questions I can help with, or get from the consultant?
Pardon?
Are there specific questions that I can answer?
I would like the consultant, no, I would like the consultants to make a presentation to us, explain their reasoning, explain their chart, just like when we had the architect come forward for the feasibility, and perhaps when they're going through their explanation, we will, we may very well have more questions that they can answer, it doesn't make sense that it's only the Personnel Committee that was, was given the presentation, they're not the only town leader, we are.
Okay, how's the rest of the board feel? Case?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll be very honest, I agree, I was all set with this last study, and then I was reached out to today, uh, by employee, and a question was raised that maybe, Jeff, you can just clarify for me and help me out. If, if an employee felt like they put their hard steps behind them, and they were going to gradually now get to the steps where they were gonna progress, does implementing a fourteen-step set them back?
No.
You're right, okay.
Because, because where you are in your current step is kind of irrelevant to the new step, because all it does is progress you through the salary range, so your new step's gonna progress you through the salary range. So it's, it's not a negative, you don't lose any money, um, and actually, it's been more beneficial, because you're further away from topping out in the range.
Okay.
All right, so you just, instead of being at number eight, you go to number two, but the money is still, you're not losing any money for me to beat.
Right.
It takes you longer to get there, though, 'cause you added two steps.
But.
It, it takes you long.
But it, but. But it, but that's not relevant because it takes you longer to get to where?
To the, to the maximum step, that fourteen.
But you don't want-
The more steps-
You never want to get to the maximum step because then you top out and you don't get raises anymore.
Well-
So the new steps, the new step ranges, the, the upper end is greater than the, the old ranges. Okay, so there's more money in it for everybody. So you, you're not-
Because their highest-
Their earning potential-
Is higher than-
-is higher in the new range than it was in the old range. All we did was reset, all we did was reset the ranges and put people in where their salary requires them to be according to the new range. Now, we have some people in the middle of the range, under the, in the middle of the old range and the middle of the new range, they're not going to move initially on implementation. But as you said before, we have a few people that are below the minimum. Right away, as soon as you adopt this, they're going to move to that minimum piece in that range, that minimum step in that range, and then progress up.
But there are two positions, hold on, there are two positions that are not going to their minimum range within their new grade, and that, so that, I had several employees reach out and at least, you know, I know there's two positions that are not getting put at the minimum step of the grade that they're in.
I understand.
Because the Personnel Committee didn't see fit, they, to do that. So it's not true. The compensation study is not being adopted one hundred percent, and that would be the tourist coordinator and economic development person, and that would be the recreation coordinator.
And this board-
So they, they were not, so they were not. As far as, you know, Conservation reached out to me, too. It's pretty much a wash for her. She, she would be, she would do better under the old system. And, and, and what we're not really seeing, so not everybody equally, equally benefiting from this. The other thing is COLA, well, that's why I want the consultants to talk to more than the Personnel Committee. This process, we're the ones who wanted the compensation study.
Right.
The Board of Selectmen, it was a goal of ours. The presentation by the consultant should have come to us, should have come to us. Conservation had concerns as well, and when you eliminate COLA and the merit increases, I, I, I personally, you did, well, that's what they were telling, there's no more merit and there's no more COLA.
No.
That's not accurate?
No.
Okay, well, so not all this department has, has the right information, then.
Well, they have, they all have the study, and I sat down with each and every one of them and explained to what's going to happen. The big difference, and we, and I mentioned this a month ago when we spoke, for the salaried employees, this is different because they're not going to earn seven percent a year anymore with a two thousand dollar merit check, okay? That's the big difference for the salaried employees. Now, if you want to keep them on that plan, you can, but the Finance Committee hates it and they feel, and it's, and it's not sustainable. So if there was ever a thought that doing a compensation study was going to make everybody happy, not going to happen. There's four people, four people in the organization that, that find this unacceptable. And I know the four, and I've tried to find a way to make them happy. There's four. And I understand it, and if, and this is the board's document, you can do with it what you will. If you want to adopt it, adopt it. I don't, don't have a dog in the fight.
I guess, I guess-
But from now on, so let me back up to the question. So the salaried employees, the eights, the seven eights, nines, well, the seven and eights now are going to be on a step and grade plan. So they're going to get their step movements that are adjusted annually for the COLA. So for instance, when we put the budget together next year, the person will get five percent. Between the COLA and the step movement, it'll be either four and a half or five percent because the first six years of that range are six, three percent steps, and the last half are two and a half percent steps. And that's the same way for grades one through six, okay? So for grades one through eight, you're going to get a, a step movement in COLA, four and a half to five percent a year, okay? For nine, ten, and eleven, you're going to get merit, which is how you move through the range, and I explained this last time, and a COLA, okay? So again, four to five percent a year, the big difference now is you don't get a merit check. The merit is the movement through the range. It goes into the base pay. And that's all in the report. So I don't know what else I can do. I've sat down with these people half dozen times. I'm being facetious, but I've met with each, I've met with the ones that have concerns as many times as they wanted to. They all have the study, they all have the documents, they all have the pay plan charts, and I circled where they were going to go and what was going to happen. And-
And I also, I'd also like to talk to the consultants about, there's other, other grades that I found interesting. For example, the assistant town clerk.
Mm-hmm.
I was on the Finance Committee when the previous town clerk created that position, assistant town clerk, and she made it very clear that it was not a position that was an admin. It wasn't an assistant to the clerk. It wasn't an admin position like Alex's and like the DPW's admin is and the police admin. It was more the equivalent of a deputy town clerk. It's an assistant town clerk, not an assistant too. And that, she's grade four, and this is stuff that, you know, that I would like to ask the consultant directly because, again, we're the town leaders. She's at a grade four based on the questionnaire that was presented to her with others that, with all due respect, I just don't think have the same job duties as she does. And she has supervisory authority. I mean, she runs the town elections when the town clerk is up for reelection, and I don't personally understand how she ended up at a grade four when I look at the other positions in grade four. She's woefully less than the sixteen-town comparison when you look at those, and I don't even think her adjustment puts her with other town, assistant town clerk. So I did reach out to the town clerk. She did not reach out to me because this was glaring to me because I think it's, again, making her an admin when she's not. She has all the powers and duties of a town clerk in a town clerk's absence. She can certify things, she can do everything that the town clerk can do. So I reached out to Lynn Gerard and I asked her, and she said, yes, it's not an admin position, it's an extension of my role, my position. So I think that grade was not appropriate. So these are the kind of things that, with all due respect, rather than going through our town administrator, we ordered the study, we're the town leaders, we're signing off on it, the presentation, just like the feasibility study, should have been given to us.
And if we had said that a month ago, I would have had him here tonight.
Oh, no, I still have the floor, I still have the floor. In the same fashion, this is an open meeting, and residents who are watching are entitled as well to watch this presentation.
That's fine.
They don't, they don't watch local access presentations given to a Personnel Committee. They watch the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and we're the ones who are going to adopt this. And this was a goal that we put for our town administrator. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I feel strongly. For that reason alone, I don't think the process was followed, and I'm not going to vote for this, not without the consultants coming to us, and while they give us a PowerPoint, we can ask our questions that we want to ask with respect to how they interpreted the questionnaires that were given, why they think some have supervisory and others don't have supervisory authority. These are the kind of things I want to ask. There's job title changes that I was curious about, that I'd like to meet with the consultant, and that's how I feel. And I, and for the same residents who are watching this, they watch Board of Selectmen meetings, they're not watching Personnel Committee meetings.
Can I say something?
Hey, how's the rest of the board feel about waiting or moving on? Jeff, you ready to hand up first?
I would just say if, a month ago, we could have had him here. That's all.
Well, you, we should have, we, we should have.
Well, I'm not a mind reader. That's all.
Well, no, it's not, it's not being a mind reader with, Jeff. This document says it's presented to town leaders. That is us. Who made the decision that the Personnel Committee was the appropriate committee to be given the-
Because they, because in the Personnel-
You said that this is their document.
In the Personnel-
You said this is their document. It's not, it's our document.
Okay, in the Personnel rules, it says a Personnel Committee develops person, uh, compensation plans. That's all. Okay?
Well, we're approving it, right?
That's fine.
It's up to us to approve.
Mary, I don't have a problem. You want to have him here, you have him here. I, I was not aware that that was part of the process for you.
You, you don't have to be a mind reader. When I read it, I said, oh, we're not even at that point. Obviously, we're the town leaders.
But I, I gave you this a month ago, you could have, you could have called me and said, hey, we want the consultant here. I-
I still thought they were coming.
That's all.
And, and Ian, how do you feel about having the consultant come in?
I think, obviously, this is something that Mary has spent a lot of time on, and it was before my time, and she feels that she's due the presentation and something that she feels that passionately about, I think she's due to. I'd have to agree with her.
Mike?
Normally, I would say that to be dragged into a compensation plan, I'd, I'd try to avoid it like a hot potato, but I, I, I know that, that you and Mary Darling also have a lot of questions. I, I think the, the consultant did an excellent job, and, but there are some issues that, that town employees would predictably have, and if we want to get involved in it, I, I will go, in, in due respect to, to the members that, that have questions, I, I would like to see a presentation. Yes.
Hey, Chief?
Not a problem.
Yeah, I, you know, I feel that the majority of the town employees are in support of this, but, I mean, if, if there are selectmen that wish to see a presentation, I certainly don't have a problem with that.
And one of the things, thank you, I appreciate that. I think employees would probably appreciate it, too, because I think they're probably watching. But one of the things that I noticed that you're going to start at step one, okay? And I'm, I'm aware when they do the point system and they come up with their classification, longevity has no relevance at all because that's not relevant to the position and the grade. So I get that. The grade isn't determined by that, and I've explained that to people. But in terms of the step, they've all been placed at step one, okay? I'll use Conservation for an example. She's been placed at step one because she was below the market rate anyway. Her position is, you know, she's going into her fifth year, so she would have been at step five under the old system, okay? Here's my, one of the problems that I have, when you read the report, when it talks about hiring, it says that considerations can be taken into account, like qualifications, it, um, background, I have to read the exact, and I'll ask the accountant this directly, I mean, the consultants directly. Hold on. It has a whole paragraph on what's appropriate to look at, and, and they actually say, given the qualifications, you may not start somebody new at step one. You may start them further along the step in that grade, okay? So my problem is, if some of these employees left tomorrow who are getting placed at step one in their grade because they were below the market analysis of the sixteen-town, all their longevity here, we're not honoring at all, we're starting them at step one. So they might have had four years in, in servage or five years, that's out the window. But when we hire somebody new, we may very well, that's what the consultants are saying, have to, we may very well take into account, it's a policy, their background. So we could bring in somebody brand new, start them in grade four, step four, because of their prior experience with another town, but our own employees who are already given four years are getting started at step one. So we're going to possibly pay new employees coming in with experience in other towns more than our own because we're not looking at longevity at all with respect to step, at least with per position, and there's a few more, a few more, I'd have to go through everyone's position. And that just doesn't sit right with me. It, it, it just doesn't sit right with me.
Well-
Okay, Jeff?
Mary, I understand, and I've had that conversation with her. My conundrum is, I can't pick and choose winners and losers. So I took the report, I'm implementing the report. If the Board of Selectmen want to now decide individual compensation rates for your employees, go ahead. But I'm not in a position to say, you have three years and you have this degree, I'm moving you here, and this one over here, I don't want to move you over here, and this one over here, I'm not going to move you. I'm not in a position to do that. That creates just more discontent in the organization. Okay?
Okay.
So unless we come up with a method that we can equitably distribute that kind of longevity to people, like Jean Bouban, who's been here twenty-nine years, right? And Barbara, Barbara Berry, who's been here twenty-something years, unless there's a good way to distribute that kind of longevity, it'd be, it creates a morass, okay? And that's the situation I'm in. I'm not in a position to pick one or two employees and say, oh, I'm going to move you here because of this, because then I'm picking winners and losers and I'm picking favorites over everybody else. I let the report-
Well, hold on.
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm, I'm talking.
Okay, sorry.
All right. I let the report speak for itself. I let the, I let the department heads and their admins work with the consultant directly on the JEQ and the scores. So it was based on the job description. In an interview, each position and each employee had with the consultant. So I understand what you're saying about the assistant town clerk. It's only, it's not considered an admin, it's just in that same range for their, basically, their job, and based upon their job description and based upon the interview they had. Now, if Lynn had a problem with that, she can visit with me, we can review it. That option has been open to everybody. There's one position we have to reclass because an element on their JEQ was miscategorized from the job description. There's one. Okay? And there's been at least three others that we've talked to with the consultant about how these got scored and, and what was the rationale. So that's fine. But I'm not in a position to pick and choose different employees and say, I'm going to give you three years of service and I'm going to give you four years of service. Not going to do that because that's just going to create chaos.
Understood. And I want to ask the consultants why, from their point of view, okay, because we hired experts to do this, why they don't see it as appropriate within a grade to recognize longevity with respect to step? That's why I want to ask that of the consultants. Maybe they'll convince me that it's not, hold on, maybe they'll convince me that it's not appropriate, but I want to know from them why everybody who is below market is starting at step one. And as far as Barbara and, and Jean goes, if, if you look at the sixteen-town comparison, they're doing, with all due respect, fine, these are positions that are below the sixteen-town comparison. And I do want to ask about, in particular, the assistant town clerk, because at grade four, she's with the administrative assistant of the building, she's with the administrative assistant of the police, and she's with the administrative assistant of the TA. So she's clearly considered an administrative assistant. There's no question, and I think perhaps the consultant, I would like to, to know why the consultant put that position there.
That's fine.
That's all.
That's a legitimate question, but please remember, in the report, those step four positions are no longer considered administrative assistants. They've all been retitled-
Regardless.
They've all been retitled, and they've all been given consideration as being not an administrative assistant. Let me put it that way because they, they carry heavier weight, heavier duties than that, okay?
But she carries more, yes, but I understand, but it's more than changing the label. She is the only one in grade four that was not previously deemed an administrative assistant. that was not previously deemed an administrative assistant, and some of their job titles have not changed. Uh, the Administrative Assistant did change to Executive Assistant. I know that. But the building one didn't change.
The building one did change. The building one did change to Permit Technician.
Okay, Permit Technician. Again, th- these are questions for the consultant. I, I don't think that grade-
Okay, Mary, Mary, we're gonna have the consultant come in.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Instead of playing ping pong.
I need to make one more comment.
Yep.
Okay. For budget purposes, we're in the process of putting the budget together. We're using the data from this product to base the budget on, because we're, because we have to at this point, because we need numbers to use. So, if the Board changes that, we can amend the budget as we go, but for the product you're gonna see in two weeks, we're using the data from this survey to craft the budget.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
See?
Okay, so... Moving on. COVID-19. Jeff?
Yeah, um, still waiting on a larger diverse, a larger supply of vaccine. The good news was, we did get a weekend with CVS, and they rolled out a couple hundred, um, or 500 doses. There, states channeling everyone to the mass vaccination sites and even shutting down or encouraging local, um, vaccination clinics to shut down. Um, the Senior Center is looking to reopen, uh, with some programs in April, and I think, uh, I'm gonna look at reopening Town Hall and COB later in this month. We'll see how it goes, but I think, um, that's where we are. The Governor changed a lot of the restrictions over the weekend, and I think we need to start planning for a reopening of our buildings. But other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay, then we have, um, the E1 pump report. You wanna have a chance to go over it?
Uh, Butch is here. He can talk about it. But in, in reality, I don't know if you want to do anything with it, but the information you requested from Shane is in the packet. Don't know if you have questions on it, or if this helps.
Eight comments?
You want to schedule this for another meeting?
That's a second question.
Mary?
I didn't know if it was a typo. I just don't totally understand it. But in the second bullet, he says, um, Sturbridge needs to get away from allowing any new developments for putting in these systems, the pumps. And then he says, "There are currently four developments where E1 pumps went in because the developer or the town saved money by installing them." And then he goes on to say, "We still, we shouldn't do it anymore, because we should put them on the gravity system, and that won't cost the town anything." Did he mean to say that the town was saving money by allowing the-
I, I don't know.
I can, I'm not sure. His usual point is, when you have a large development and they all have to have E1 pumps, it would be better for everyone to have them put in a pump station, have everything flow to the one pump station, and that they would operate the pump station, and then it would send it to us. His contention is, and I, I understand what he's saying, the E1 pumps are, they're a pain, you know, to be honest. They're just, there's a lot of them. There's 600 and, he's got 693, I think he said, in town, and that's a lot, and, uh-
Right.
But what's, the question I have, do you have this document in front of you?
I do. I have the email.
So, does he mean to say that the town saved money, or did he only mean that the developer saved money? Did the town save money by putting in these pumps?
No, it would cost us money.
I know. So, I'm wondering, did he mean to say that?
Yeah, I'm sure he said he meant the developer saves money, because we, we pay for the pumps, and he doesn't have to deal with it. Whether if he put a pump station in, he'd have to pay for the pump station.
Well, that's why I said, "Or the town saved money by installing these." I want to know if he meant that.
Yeah, I think that was a, I think that was a misprint, because later on, he says-
I know.
They could have gravity systems with a private PS pump station, and the town would have had the-
That's why I understand it. That's-
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, he, he said that wrong.
Yeah. The low-pressure, uh, systems with E1 pumps initially cost less money, but when you capitalize it over a longer period of time, they end up being more expensive. So-
Yeah.
And a gravity-
That's just the main flow.
And a gravity system with a pump station.
Right, yeah. It's just hundreds, hundreds of pumps, and, and it, you know, we don't have, we're not extending our sewer system actively right now, so anything that comes in, a lot of them are ones that didn't go in originally, because it didn't have, they couldn't pick up the gravity. So, now there, a lot of the stuff that's coming in is, is E1s. It's probably gonna be a longer discussion. We're gonna be having a rate study soon, and, uh, we're hoping to talk about that during that process.
But I'd like to hold off on this. I'm still not totally sold. I mean, the town convinced people at town meetings to vote for the E1 pump. And a number like, oh, what's he buying, new pump? $2,000?
Yeah, he's-
Yeah, that's kind of, um, kittens out of a two-and-a-half-million-dollar budget. You know? They're contracted to work for the town and to work on the E1s. If they can't do it, they can hire out someone to come in and do it for them. But I don't want to put the burden on the homeowners.
I thi- I think-
Jeff, I get you.
I think what he's saying is, any new, uh, development in town-
Oh, I know that's, I know that's what he was saying, but then, then we have the haves and the have-nots.
Yep.
So, I'd like to, uh, put this off then until we get that clarification and a little more information, but, you know, since day one, Shane's been against them. It's like, um, it's like they were against, uh, shoveling out the hydrant.
Well, this, uh, this report was basically a response to your request. That's all.
I agree with Mary, but I also had one question. Maybe somebody, either you, Butch, or, or Jeff would know, because I have no idea, or Chase, maybe, um, Mike. He goes on to say, "Anybody that gets the E1 pump should be required to have a backup generator," okay? What does a backup generator cost to a homeowner? That seems to me several thousand dollars, right? I don't know what it would cost.
It's probably at least a grand, maybe two. You know, the, the generator itself is almost a thousand dollars in most cases.
Right.
And then to get it, wipe your house, it's gonna cost you. And he said that because it, like, for instance, in the Big Alum area, it's, it's a three-phase system up there, so if they lose one leg, and then somebody uses their E1 pump, it destroys the pump. Whereas if they had a backup generator, that would kick in with, with the three phases, and they, the pump would go malfunction.
Yeah.
Right. But I mean, for example, I have an E1 pump. We don't have a backup generator, and we've had this pump now, well, now we have a new one because it wore out, but it was like 15 years or something, since we were in the very first, you know, part of town that got town water, and we weren't required to get a backup generator. So, I don't know why-
Yeah.
We're gonna require other homeowners to. I, I kind of agree with our chair. We're gonna have haves and have-nots with this approach.
Yeah, well, I think it's mostly the, like, for brownouts and when the one phase is done, and when people tend to use them to burn the pump out. Normally, like with you, when you lose power, your pump doesn't work, so you just, you know, you just wait till the power comes back on, and then it works. But there are situations where it's different.
Okay. Yeah.
How many situations would-
I didn't necessarily agree with that. I just-
Yeah.
Defied the pump report.
Butch, how many would that affect?
I don't know. It's, it's mostly the northern Big Alum area, up, up off of Clark Road, Big Alum, Lake Road, um, every, and, and it also swings around to the upper end of Clark Road. So, that whole end of Big Alum is fed from Arnold Road on a three-phase system, and twice since I've been here, one phase has gone out, and Shane has to replace, uh, 10 to 15 pumps, depending on who used them and who didn't. So, it's not- It's not something that happens all the time, but when it does happen, it's, it's expensive.
But then that could also fa- fall under educating the people about their pumps. I mean, if people don't know what they're doing.
I think they're getting smarter every time we have outage. Yeah, I've been putting them up on the page.
Yeah, a lot of people, if you don't tell them upfront, they won't know. I mean, when they, you know, sell a house or, you know, there should be some information, given that, hey, this is going to happen. Do we still have the, um, I don't know what you call it? When, uh, uh, you know, when power goes out and somebody, you know, the pump doesn't work because there's no power, it's like, uh, one or two days, it's, uh, they can still flush?
I think they have a 60-gallon capacity.
Yeah.
So, it depends on where, depends on where the pump was when the power went out. If it was full when it went out, you don't have much room. If it was empty, you got a lot of room. But we do have it.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
What was the question?
Do we still ha- do we still have the equipment to clean out the pump? And those two things?
We do, but it, there's 600 and something of them, so I don't, I don't recommend calling us as soon as the power goes out to go- system, but if, I mean, in, in extreme cases, we do have to-
But, Butch, be realistic. Be realistic.
Yeah. No, we have, we do have the-
673 of them are not out yet, one, you know?
Yeah, we can in extreme cases.
Well, I think we need a lot more information. And you, but Butch, you did mention that this was a request from us.
He said, he said you had requested more information. That's the information that you requested.
Oh, yeah. I thought you meant the initial request.
No, he's not looking for anything at this point. He's just throwing out the information.
Okay. Well, we need more information. I do. Mary does. Chase, how about you?
Yeah, I'd like to continue with, talk to Shane, ask a few questions.
Hey, Ian?
I'd have to agree with the rest of the Board. Um, I think that just because 15 years ago, we agreed to install technology that maybe isn't working out correctly, that maybe we shouldn't continue down that path forever, just because that's how we did it one time, that if there's an improvement to be made, or it can be made better and more cost-effective, that we should move to that. When you talk about haves and have-nots, I don't have a pump. I pay into the sewer and the taxes, and I'm paying for these other pumps to be repaired, so talk about fairness. I think it's definitely worth looking into making it better, and if requiring a generator would maybe cause it to be cost-prohibitive for people to install them, and we can move away from it that way, then maybe that's the best bet.
Okay, to be continued. Thank you, Butch.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, old business. Mary, do you have any?
Hold on. Yes, I just have one. Um, I raised it as new business last time. I requested an agenda item, um, to be placed on the agenda, the Senior Work Program. But it wasn't, it wasn't placed. I mean, we had a pretty full, um, agenda this evening, but I would really like it if we can put it on for the next meeting, and I do want these kind of things answered. Number one, hold on, Jeff, then I'll let you just, number one, when did we adopt the senior program? What is the current amount that they can work off? How many seniors are currently taking advantage of the program? Because I'll be honest, um, I think it's been many, many years since we altered the amount of money, and I am looking to increase the senior program so that they can work off more money. So, I'd like to have that. Jeff will probably have the answers, Barbara Berry or Ann. Um, and I want to know how much money it will cost us to increase the amount. It was at $500 a few years ago, um, and I, I don't know if it's even changed since then, so.
Mary, the answer to that question, some of the answers you can get looking at the, your booklet on, um, Selectman Policy.
Okay.
It's in there on that. And the amount is limited, $500.
Okay, so-
However, if there's, if there's extra money, if the slot kind of fills, people can work up to, um, $750.
Okay. But, so I still would like an, a, an agenda item, because I am looking to increase that. I think our taxes have gone up every year. We have a good cash reserve, and I think the seniors should get an adjustment on that and be able to, now, how, how much it's adjusted, I don't know. I don't know how many seniors are taking advantage of it. But I think it's worth a, a dialogue. I think it's worth a conversation for the selectmen to have. So, if it can be an agenda item.
Hey, Jeff?
Yes, we did not forget that. Ann is putting together numbers for that. Right now, it's 500. The, the state law allows 1,500. So, looking at a schedule of what's it gonna cost to go to 1,000, what's it gonna cost to go to 1,500, we just didn't have the data for this meeting. So, it wasn't forgotten.
Okay, awesome.
It wasn't forgotten. I know it needs to be done. It'll be on a future agenda for your consideration, but we want to put the, put the data together for your review. And I would say include in that the veterans exemptions as well, because that's part of that, that's a similar program, so we should look at the veterans as well.
I, I agree with that recommendation. Thank you. And that is exactly what I'm looking for, some kind of how it's gonna affect the town to increase it over time. So, thank you.
Hey, Chase, any old business?
I have no. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I'd, I'd just, uh, like to, uh, report that, uh, I'm, I'm a member of the CMRPC Transportation Committee, and, uh, last week, we voted on prioritizing FY '26, uh, transportation projects, and the Sturbridge Route 20 project was, uh, voted to be on Tier One for 2026. So, we're, we're, um, uh, good in the committee like that. The, uh, full MPO will, will probably be voting, uh, on the 2026 tip, uh, next month, or, or this month, in, in March. So, we'll, I'll update you that, on that later, but we're going, we're moving along finally on that. I feel great about that, uh, you know, something's happening, and money will be coming. So, it seems like it's a long way off, 2026, but it'll come sooner than, uh, than you think, and there's a lot of work to do, so.
Hey, thank you, Mike. Ian, any old business?
Um, yeah, I raised the question of in-person meetings a long time ago, and I know we were working towards that, and with the relaxation of some of the restrictions, and I know even tonight, it came up that we're looking, we need to meet in person for certain things. I'm just curious where that lies, and, and where everybody else's opinion is of that.
Well, Jeff just mentioned that, uh, hopefully by the end of the month, Central Office of Building and Town Hall will be open, so if that happens, you can go live.
I just know the Town Hall had been open before, but we were choosing to meet off-site, so.
I'm personally willing, as we did the retreat, we were nicely spread out, and, um, I thought that worked, so I'm ready and willing to go, um, in person.
Okay, the only, um, old business I have, um, Jeff had wanted at the evaluation sheet, the, if he wanted to give any input on it for him. So, I think he's been working on it. And Jeff, you going to email it to people, and we can look at it and at our next meeting?
Yeah, I'll get it out in the morning.
Agree with it on? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have review of the Selectman's goals.
I made the list. I don't know if they're in your priority order, or, you know, last year, we had a priority list, and we had the full list, so a little help with this. If you want to take some time and give it, give me your priorities, we can put this together later on, but this is the list. If I've missed something, let me know. If there's something on here that shouldn't be, let me know.
Okay, why doesn't everybody- Okay, why doesn't everybody, you know, go through this and just suggest what you consider priority, and he can make a list on that, and we can vote on them at our next meeting.
Mary, can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Um, why doesn't everybody go through their list? Jeff know which ones you consider high priority, and then we can look at that list at our next meeting and vote on them. We'd still be able to make adjustments.
Okay.
We're going to use ranked choice voting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, some of them-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, we owe the administrators some, some priorities list, yeah.
Okay. Okay, next we have approval, oh no, we have correspondence. Mike?
Okay, let's see. We've got an update from KP Law that was dated February 19th, and it's about public record law, records law, and department certification policies and that sort of thing, so, and the other piece of correspondence is from Charter, and believe it or not, it's a letter from John Mayer to the, to the, to the Town Administrator, also dated February 19th, and it's an update for the, around March 1st, WGBN America will be on Channel 69, 84, or 806, a new, new channel. And that's the correspondence list that we have. We did, we also received correspondence, as I recall, from pilot today, and that was regarding the, what we discussed with the building inspector, request for a temporary occupancy permit.
Okay, and we did get the, and you all got a copy of the letter from Mr. Vajita?
Oh, yeah.
And that has been passed on off to the Health Board and everything, and people are working on it, so.
That's good. That was a good letter.
Okay, next, minutes of the Saturday 16th, 2020 meeting, anyone have any corrections or additions? Okay, hearing none, anybody want to make a motion then to the committee?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second, Mike?
Your second. Okay, Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Case, how do you vote?
Case, yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, next we have citizens forum.
Let me check.
I just want to say something to Alex. Alex, thank you, the meeting minutes are looking really, really good. As you see, no, nobody had any corrections this week, so I want to thank you, I know it's a tedious task.
Oh, thank you, yeah, thank you all for your help of getting me up to speed, I appreciate it.
No, it's tedious, it's definitely not fun, but necessary.
You're a quick learner, Alex.
Thank you, I try.
Good evening, everyone, anyone, everyone, is there anyone on the line that would like to speak to the public forum, to the Board of Selectmen?
There's no one to speak, Metachair.
Okay, there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Chase.
I'll second it. Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, enjoy the win.